The injection really was not as bad.
I think it just sounds bad.
It sounds terrifying. I mean, you know, like needles.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of needles. You know, my big aunt, this was getting him having memory issues. He had, he'd have some strange thing. He had something or something. And they specifically told him not to rub his eye.
Oh, yeah.
Eye doctor. And so he rubbed his eye. And I'm telling you what, it was awful. Like, it would be, it was like jet black.
Oh, geez.
And it got infected. And then he actually lost vision in his eye. They came back, they went back and forth multiple times. It was like almost a year.
Ew.
That's, yeah, that's scary.
Yeah.
I mean, you don't want to mess with that stuff.
No.
Glad to be here.
Hey, well, see. Doing all right.
Yeah.
He says right after talking about this very side problem.
Yeah, exactly.
Do I have one of these now too?
Oh, so I had. I know, right? No, I, so I had eye pressure issues last year. And what it was, it was my asthma medicine. And so then I was able to back down to a lower dose of my acid. In your cortical steroids, it's a class effect. The ocular pressure.
Cool. Yeah.
I guess it's cool, so. Because of my asthma exacerbation that I had.
Yeah.
My mother started them. They put them to a higher dose and I could, you could feel it like I'm, like I swear.
That's why.
You didn't plug it in.
As I told people, would you ever have, would you ever breathe better or have your eyes explode?
Plug this in and then do plug that in.
Yeah, right.
I'm kidding, I'm exaggerating.
Not be able to breathe or have your eyes explode, yeah.
Both ends must be plugged in before it can work.
Well, you also have to use the right fitting. It's not the right fitting.
Okay.
At least till the summer when these allergies stop. But maybe in the story we'll see.
How's it going?
Good, how are you?
Good.
That good? That good?
These days, but right now, it's just like really. Sorry. After this meeting, remind me to talk to you about a, the. That document. One with the. Offended with that.
Okay.
Reached the resolution. Boy, this time I need to stop. He went ahead and transferred it into his son's state.
Okay.
So that takes it off the tape. So good. He didn't want to go through the whole process of.
Does the house go?
No, that's fine.
Oh, dude, you just saw it. I was just gonna show that to you. I thought that was hilarious. And it's so true.
It is so true. Well, I started reading this.
That's what I started doing too. I'm committed now.
I forgot my. It's going. I was telling Matt before you guys got here. Demo the laundry.
Oh, boy.
And they have the original gas dryer still in there. It's been 1974.
What?
Managed to keep it. But we're switching to another one. Right downstairs to the basement to shut the gas before I hook the dryer. The dryer in the layout of the house is the closest appliance to the gas.
Which is already done.
The gas line comes in to the house. There's a valve. Then a T junction. One goes up to the dryer, one goes down and over to everything else. Water heater. So to shut off this top valve, in order to shut off gas to the dryer, I have to shut everything in my house. So now we've got a plumber coming to redo the lines because. Seeing that, I was like, maybe that's why you never replaced the original dryer, because you can't shut off the gas to replace it.
That's why you get them to the gas dryer.
Well, but even then, you have to go. You're not still on gas at the house. Cause there's no valve, there's no shut off valve right behind the dryer. The only valve to shut off gas to the dryer is on the main line in the basement.
There has to be a shut off valve. Cause how else would you?
I don't know. The joys of homo. We closed January 28th.
Where?
Case over to Cleveland, sorry.
No, no, it's okay.
Patrick says maybe you're taking it, so you're not. He's, Marty's working on it. Patrick's working, Marty and I real hard trying to convince our wives to move out.
Find you a house. That's what he's saying. I mean, we'll get Dom back some years.
We're pretty happy with it. It's just a lot happening at once right now.
So now I have to tell you, my buddy, buddy Josh was in Berlin. When they bought their house, energetically, demoed his laundry room and basically that person's house, it's like. I don't know what style I call it, everything I do. It's like we have like three levels and then it's like a half. So I guess we were like small rooms. So you come up the drive where the garage is right there in this little room. This little room, it's got a basement, but it's not a basement, it's laundry.
Just the mechanicals.
Yeah, so pretty much you can explode or something. He demoed the floor there and then back into the laundry. When they first moved in, he was like, soon gone home. His fiance was out of town. He's like, oh, I'm gonna have this done. Then we put the floor, realized that like, it was like a severe slowdown to the, cause that's how they used to do things back to the drain in there. Well, we'll just build up the, as you want to be in the cabin to put the washer and dryer aside. So we just kill ourselves, mostly building. It's like this, it's been like three or four years, it's still like that. It's funny, cause I was over at his house some weekend. I just kind of chucked it, cause I remembered how energetic he was. Now that said, he has replaced the floors himself, like in almost the entirety of the upstairs. So he's done a significant amount of work, but for some reason, our very first thing.
It gotta be achievable. Our first priorities were the master, the kitchen, and laundry. Three rooms we need most to survive.
Maybe sometimes it can affect it.
The real issue of like repainting the master bedroom is you kind of move out of your bedroom to paint it.
By the time you come back around, you can do your second go, it's dry. So we have doors in the basement. And I've been doing this. I placed two of the doors down there. On the glassing, cause I found that I can put my guitars in this one cabinet. This is the people's, it's white. Probably a minimal, I think it's a little late, I think that's what I do, cause I think I can do that. I've since heard, I guess you can count that. But anyway, I didn't realize until like I was trying.
Good, how's it going?
His doors were decent sized.
No, no, I'm totally, I'm just kind of playing.
I did one.
But so does that one, it's welcome. Well, you're usually good. Are you sure?
Yeah, it was twenty.
Oh, so I can see your toilet.
Well, it's cause the enamel is oil based, so it dries a lot.
Anyone about to make a nap?
No.
Like they're not talking to us?
What did I just paint up my cabin? Is it now fire hazard?
Bring the popcorn? Should we bring the popcorn?
Have you, have you talked to McBride?
But, um, like I want to.
Reach out to that.
And my buddy works for.
An old school guy, so. He doesn't understand the voter.
Stand in Washington.
That really surprised me. I guess I'm old enough. And that just seems basic to me.
That's what I thought, but.
Not, not that way.
Yeah, not that way.
They aren't making it right.
My little tiny.
Which wouldn't surprise me either. And like, this is how these things.
Finish the kitchen on my go. That sounds like a lot more sport. Washing the rolls.
You know?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So we.
Children, huh?
No. I don't trust them.
My parents always.
I let a guy, like, look.
I, that's the one thing that my mother never let me do, and so I've only done it twice in my life. I'm gonna have to relearn real fast. She thought for sure that I would chub myself.
So it was kind of a good little like learning.
When I was eighteen, and then we went on a trip to England without me.
So my kids have driven my truck. But I don't know if like.
I love it. Oh, I saw it. This is so perfect, cool. Wow, okay, have you found this? No, like, it's like a weapon. Wow.
That is.
That is so cool. I never got the video. I got the video, but I wanted to post.
The video of us winning the award?
Yeah, it's gonna get like a good chance.
Wait, did you get a video at all?
Yeah, that's the one that you buy. But I wanted like to put on my site.
That's awesome.
And I'll have to get you one.
Okay.
It's such a large file, we have to put it like in trains for drop box.
Okay.
Did you feel that?
And I can put it on.
Remember they handed it to us, they're like, no, this is heavy. Okay, wait, wait, we also got this.
Yeah. And you got money.
Category. Yes. Oh, wait, wait, there's more, hold on.
Oh, my God. Who, Franklin or Mayor? Look at Brian, you like. Oh, my God. Was Brian excited? Like, did Brian feel excited? Yes.
Does he look excited?
Look, Brian, he looks excited, yeah.
That's not as much excitement as you got of Brian.
So we're all these.
So our architect is on the end there, they designed this.
Wow.
And then this is Snyder Recreation, Jamie Snyder and his butterfly Snyder. And Mayor, and then these are the director of the Department of Commerce and Transportation. She comes from the city of San Francisco.
It's true. Yeah. So where do they?
They're local.
Okay. Oh, my God. They know?
Yeah, they come to the conference.
They come to their conference. Okay, 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 yeah. Yeah, we got a little cred now. I need one of these, cause I want to post it. That is, uh, wait, wait, let me just.
Send it around, here, pass it around.
Oh, I saw her pictures.
That's awesome.
No, these are fatter pictures.
You really should be there.
So cool.
So Brian was trying to hold that in one arm while we were socializing after. It's nothing. Oh, that little one, you know.
I know. Kathy, where are you gonna put it? In the office?
I don't know, Brian wants to build a whole display shelf.
I want infrared lights around it, you know, like.
Well, the LED laser.
Yeah, I, yeah. I want a Tom Cruise proof.
My kids have these LED lights in their room that you can get them off of Amazon.
Yes. Kathy can change colors for seasons.
Is it seven?
Push him and then I do a video of him.
It depends, cause my mom gets her. Or maybe it's by. No, actually you can't.
Really?
Oh, wow.
Think how much it saves.
Oh, yeah. The paper alone. Oh, yeah.
Now called to order, the committee of the whole meeting of February sixth, twenty twenty-three, the time is seven PM. Ben, would you please call the roll? Member Vol.
Here.
Member Schreit.
Here.
Member Ware.
Here.
Member McLeister.
Here.
Member Wyer.
Here.
Member Matheny.
Here.
Member Orr is absent, six present.
Motion excuse, member Orr.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's start off with Darrell.
Having your packet, item three A, which is a request from the administration to reclassify thirty-three parcels scattered throughout the city that are currently zoned office building. And if you look at your, in your packet on page eight, you will notice items A through H describe the various thirty-three parcels. Some of these will return to a Main Street zoning, or be placed in the Main Street zoning. Some will be returning to a residential neighborhood, some will go to GBA. This is not, uh, let me just take a step back. This reclassification is consistent with the current use. And it's also consistent with what we did, I want to say about eighteen months ago, when we were over in the other chamber, where we took some residential properties and made sure that the zoning for those residential properties was correct. So again, this is a technical cleanup in some respects, it smoothes it out a little bit. And we think it'll make for a more comprehensive and better understood zoning ordinance. Patrick, do you have anything to add on this?
Let me just say that, you know, it's been an internal process between Marty Van Gundy and his department, and then Ben Young, and to a lesser extent, myself, working to try to get this, it does make sense. It's not a classification that we're ever gonna use again, it's more representative of the time gone by. We would use some other different classification today, so let's just kind of clean it up.
Ben, do you have anything to add?
The, the thirty-three parcels are all of the office buildings zoning remaining in the city.
Yep.
And three, part of what started this is three of the parcels were, almost coincidentally, three of the property owners came to us and asked to be rezoned. And it just sort of spiraled into looking at all of the office building.
Citizen initiative. We'll be talking about that later, perhaps. Counsel, I'll start down with Mr. Matheny.
I'm good. I like the fact that residents came to us and that's going back to the presidential.
Ms. McLeister, you've been, you've seen this firsthand, it's your property, correct?
Uh, yeah, actually, um, before I was on council, my property was affected by the last change, so, no, I went through this, it all makes sense and, uh, yeah, I think we should move forward.
Ms. Ware?
Same.
Mr. Schreit?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion then that we send this to the planning commission for its review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries, and kind of a motion and a second to postpone further consideration of item three A until the conditions set by codified ordinance eleven eighty-one oh six are met.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to Street and Alley, this is mine. This is our annual agreement to participate in ODOT's purchasing program for rock salt. We do this every year, we're doing it earlier, because they usually give us very little notice. This, if we pass this now, then we are ready to pull the trigger at any time. We've done this for years and years and years. Pretty standard. Patrick, do you have anything to add to this?
No, I guess I would just say that, you know, it's something that gets put on our contract review system that we have, so that we kind of know when things are coming. And we recognize that we do get very little notice from this state agency. There seems to be a lot of that going around these days of little notice. And as a result, I, you know, one time we had to like react very quickly through council when it makes it kind of difficult. And it's typically was happening like in April, so we're kind of front loading it, like you say, to get this out of the way now. And then when they decide to release the, the program to us to evolve, then we'll have this, put it in, boom, we're done. Thank you for that.
Any comments, questions?
Coming for Patrick, I, I think it should be noted that one of the reasons we're doing this for the next round is that we have had situations in the past where we have not acted timely and found ourselves shopping for salt at the very highest price. And so this is a way to at least reduce some of the fiscal damage should prices spike.
But I will say, we've been really good about it for a long time.
Yes.
I mean, I know since you've been in the administration.
Way back.
It's, it's way, it's a long time, we have not had that issue.
I think the last time we had it was when Earl Wise was the minister.
Yeah, I swear.
Invited for an ungodly amount.
Okay, and we're gonna want to put this on emergency when we do it, so I will move that we put this on the agenda.
Revolt was second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Before we adjourn?
Yes.
Is there any else?
There is nothing else.
Would counsel indulge me for just a moment or two?
Please.
Sure.
Should we ask what first?
Oh, you'll hear. I want to talk tonight.
Can we get a topic first?
Yeah. Here's what I want to discuss tonight. I want to discuss what I call the price of lying. Most of the time when lying occurs in public forum, it's off everybody's radar. But I've got a couple of examples that affect the taxpayers in two very different and important ways. The first was that you may recall about a year ago, we had a discussion about behavior in this chamber. And I suggested that it seemed to me, in my opinion, using the simile like, was like a political Munchausen's by proxy. Mr. Tripp filed a false statement with the Ohio Civil Rights Commission, even though he attested that the facts were true in his statement. The Civil Rights Commission rendered an opinion, and I think it's important that I read it. It says there is no evidence that responded, the city, me, made any derogatory comment or treated the charging party in a disparaging manner due to protected basis or made an assumption the charging party had a disability. Now, I think it's important to understand that Mr. Tripp declared under penalty of perjury that the facts were true. They were not. Now, it's his prerogative to do that. He can file charges all day long. What people need to understand is it cost the taxpayers one thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars to defend a bogus charge. Lied, under oath, and the taxpayers paid for it. More significant was the episode two weeks ago. During our discussion of the master plan. Mr. Osborne, who's here with us tonight, brags about his twenty years of experience. Twenty years, attends all the meetings. He knew, knows now, knew then, knew before the meeting. That council was nowhere close to rezoning Fifth and Sixth Street in Orchard. It was a marker for some future council. It was a lie. Now, what's the cost? what's the cost? Well, here's what it is. Twenty-two percent of the homes in that particular neighborhood are already rentals. At some point, somewhere below fifty percent, rentals likely rot the neighborhood. Also, there are other biotown landlords who don't really care about property maintenance. First things to go usually is landscape. Those dogs chained in the yard. Paint those. You can drive around town, you can see it. And then the second part about it is, is that not only do the landlords not invest, because they have no commitment to the community. And if you doubt me, look at Canton. Look at Akron, you can get on the auditor's website, Canton, and start counting, you can look. Happened here? Dunno, I'll come to that in a minute. But the second and most, most challenging issues, not only do we have twenty-one percent, so you're halfway to fifty already. It's about eleven or twelve homes. Eighteen homes. And I can tell you by looking at the lists, and I've looked at all the properties, some of those that are rentals are masquerading as owner occupied, because there's a little owner occupied tax break that they get. I found a couple of. The second issue we have is that oftentimes, exclusively, and again, I'm being general, tenants display behaviors that undermine the very quality of life those people who came up here cherish most. How do we know this? Because we have the police reports. Trespass, threats, theft, larceny already shown up in our police report for that area. It wasn't all that long ago that Mrs. Revolt and I bought our first house. We scrimped, and we saved, and we got it, and we were happy. And I recognize that for many of the people who live up there in an owner occupied home, that home is the single largest investment that they have. Larger than their 401K, larger than their savings account, that's it. Now, as I look at tenants, the police reports, as I look at the percentage of landlords, is this a freckle? Or is it melanoma? What is it? I don't know yet. But here's what I can tell you. The very man who was denigrated a year ago is accomplished in data analytics. And I think it's important that our citizens understand that we are beginning to merge all the data from rental registration, property code maintenance, police, et cetera. We're gonna have a pretty good picture, eventually. The preliminary one should raise our eyebrows. But let's not talk about it. Let's not put it anywhere that any future council will even think about it until the damage is done. What's the solution? I don't know. But I do know this. That if at some future point, the administration and a council are not attentive to this issue, and it's not only in this neighborhood, property values will go down. And like melanoma, that cancer can metastasize to other neighborhoods. More police calls, more complaints. But let's not talk about it. Nope. Why would we want to worry about where taxpayer resources are going to be spent in the future for some future council? We don't want to know. So instead, we're engaged in outright assault on citizens. Boy, who said that? The plan will destroy well-maintained homes. I'm going to suggest it's the rental that will destroy well-maintained neighborhoods. And of course, for drama, actively wipe off the map one hundred homes, well, it's actually closer to fifty. So, what does a lie do? Those people up there who worked hard for those homes were asked to ignore the protection of their investment. Can I calculate the number? I can't. But what I can tell you is this, is looking at home values in North Canton, they go up. I got newsflash, they also go down. And if you're in the trough, that investment doesn't grow, or in fact, may diminish in terms of its market value, depending on who's on either side of you. How crazy is this? After the meeting, an individual called the city, said, what are you guys going to do up here? Well, nothing. Good. Property owner said, I'm putting my, I'm going to make my, convert my owner occupied home into a rental. Think about that second, so there's one more. Friend of mine has a rental property up there, he says, I hate rental registration. So, why is that? Nah, you guys are coming into my place, but I'm glad because I went in. Smoke detectors were beeping. The tenants removed all the smoke detectors rather than put batteries in them. Now, where those houses are stacked one-on-one, big fire. Again, behaviors that aren't conducive to a well-ordered and well-run neighborhood. Here's the problem again. If you lie about this stuff, it's the homeowner who pays the price, it's not going to be anybody around this council. It's the homeowner. And I would submit to you that I find that conduct offensive. And in fact, I even struggle for an appropriate adjective. Anybody who's been around this room knows that in the last twenty-four months, we have undergone one fairly decent rezone up on North Market Avenue. And anybody who was paying attention knows that the council, the administration, and the developer spent an inordinate amount of time ensuring that the residents affected were happy and pleased. And for an individual to claim that the city is going to cause the extinction of a neighborhood is disgusting. There is no defense for lying like that. None. I'm done.
Okay. Anyone else want to comment? And we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Adjourned.
Response to?
Laughing off, Chucky. You did it, buddy.